We're gonna call this meeting in order. Uh, before we get into roll call and pledge allegiance, I am here reading pursuant to MGL's chapter thirty-eight, section twenty. I am hereby informing all attendees that a video and audio recording is being made, the meeting and the meeting, the meeting of the meeting, and the meeting is being livestreamed and run live on the city's community TV channel. We can get a roll call?
Mayor Garcia?
Here.
Ms. Fave? Ms. Brunel? Mr. Romero? Ms. Tensley-Williams? Ms. Rivera-Cologne?
Here.
Ms. Feliciano?
Here.
Mr. Willehan?
Here.
Mr. Calamore?
Here.
Ms. Wilson?
Here.
All rise for the pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, the state, one nation, under God, civil, liberty, and justice for all.
Our vice chair, for the first time in eight years since she's been elected representative, missed a meeting. So I just wanna give her a lot of credit for, and I'm happy that she's taking care of herself, um, for the first time in eight years. Uh, so I'm taking on a role, um, as my official duty as chair of this school board. We'll start with, um, if there's anything from the public that...
That logged in.
She is. Whoa, Mildred, are you, are you participating?
So we can't hold that against her? She didn't miss a meeting.
I'm gonna be here in spirit watching, but...
Do you want me to continue?
Like you said, I'm gone for today.
Will you be voting on anything?
No.
Okay. So you're here, but you're not here. For the first time in eight years, she's half here. Any comments from the public, public speak out? Anybody sign up?
No public comment.
Alright, we're gonna dive into agenda item number two, student showcase. Bevan Brunel, Hoyoke High School Theater Company. Bevan, welcome.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for having us in today. I'm Bevan Brunel. I'm the director of the Hoyoke High School Theater Company, and I also am the team lead for the Performing and Media Arts Academy at Hoyoke High School. And then I have some lovely students here with me, Devani Lopez and Kira Morse, that are here to talk about our upcoming production of Charlie and the Chocolate Factory. So I'll let them take it away. Here's Devani, who plays Willy Wonka.
Ooh.
How are you guys?
That's a voice right there.
So I, uh, I wanna thank Ms. Brunel, first and foremost, for giving me the opportunity to even come into theater. Um, it's something that I never really thought that I would do. And so last year, she pulled me into doing the, the show, and I loved it. And so this year, um, I get to play Willy Wonka, and Charlie and the Chocolate Factory is one of my favorite movies growing up. So playing this part is, it feels like surreal.
Thank you.
Then Kira, who's my right-hand person, she's playing my stage manager. She's not in the show. She has a huge, important role, and I'll have her talk a little bit about that.
So I pretty much, I work alongside Ms. Brunel. I work with the cast and the crew to make sure everything's going smoothly. And I help the stage crew get everything they have in order and make sure that we have all the things we need backstage. And I also will be helping doing lights eventually.
So we just started today with our first read-through of the play. We had auditions about a week and a half ago, but we had this really cool opportunity come up. So we didn't have auditions last week. We had a public service announcement that we were making with the Ad Council, which is a national organization that we were working with, and an agency out of New York City. So last week, we were really busy working on that project during the week. So this week, we decided to pick up our rehearsals, starting with a read-through today. Our performances are gonna be November sixteenth, seventeenth, and eighteenth. It's a Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. We'll have those performances at seven PM. And then, as always, we have a post-show discussion where the crew can, and the cast can be asked questions by the public. One thing we're doing this year that's different, and I'm really excited about, is we're having two dress rehearsals that are gonna be opened up to K-8 students, and they're going to happen during the school day. So it's gonna be a PBIS incentive. K-8 students can earn the opportunity to get bussed over to Hoyoke High School on the Monday, the fourteenth of November, or the fifteenth, depending on what school they go to. And they'll be able to watch that dress rehearsal and then ask questions from the cast and crew afterwards. So that's something that we added this year that we're really excited about. So, yeah, do you guys have any questions for my students or me? It's November sixteenth, seventeenth, and eighteenth. Tickets are not on sale yet, but as soon as they are, I will make sure that the information is sent to you all. There will be a press release that goes out as well. So they, we will have them available in person and online, like we have in the past. And MIFA Victory Theater is again sponsoring our online ticket sales, so we don't have to pay a fee to do that, which is really wonderful. We are doing another show. As soon as this show ends, we're having auditions for a second show. I can't announce the title of it yet because I technically don't have the rights yet. As soon as that check is cashed, I can announce the name of it. Um, I'm really excited about that. We always do a comedy first, something that's fun, lighthearted. Our second show, though, is a more serious acting piece every year. Last year, we did Radium Girls, which was a big hit. And so this year, I'm really excited about this play because it involves really awesome acting, but it also involves puppetry. So we're taking, we're taking some new treads here with building puppets and doing puppetry in our shows, including shadow puppetry. So...
Ellie, do you have a question?
I just, I just wanted to say, I think it's great that, um, you know, you're getting the younger students involved, especially using the PBIS as a tool for incentivizing students and, and making that connection when they're young, so they get the same energy that the two students that you have brought, you know, here tonight. You know, they, they can share that and hopefully join the team when they get older.
Absolutely. We really want people to enjoy the arts in Hoyoke. Whether or not they join the Performing and Media Arts Academy, we still want them to have an appreciation for it and, and be entertained by what we're doing.
Irene?
Yeah. So to the young gentleman, and then I have a question for her. Did you wanna play, um, Willy Wonka, like the guy? Or was there another one? And like, what do you, how do you relate to him?
So I, I really wanted to play Willy Wonka. I, um, Ms. Brunel was having trouble figuring out which play we were gonna do in the fall, and I suggested Willy Wonka, and I guess she chose it.
Is it one of your favorites?
Yeah. I like the way he dresses.
You have the face for it, yeah, yeah. Um, thank you. And then for the young ladies, and again, I'm really bad with names, so, uh, Kira, thank you. Um, as a stage manager, as an assistant stage manager, um, what do you expect? You know, like, um, being a part of a leadership, right? It's like a lot of work, and it's fun, and it's, especially, I mean, I've seen it. We do dancing classes, so like, I can imagine. Uh, what is your, so far, your, I would say, what do you look forward to?
I'm looking forward to finally having the show come and just watch all the work we're gonna put into it play out.
So do you get to, like, manage certain groups for, like, while she's doing something else, or?
Yeah, so I work mainly with the cast and the crew.
Oh, nice. That's awesome. Thank you.
Kira takes, takes attendance, and she makes sure everybody's in attendance, and then she communicates with people if they're not present. But she's also really in charge of the stage crew. So once we start working in the auditorium, she's gonna be making sure the stage crew is moving things where they're supposed to be and hitting their marks. And we have to really choreograph it. Kira did work on previous shows with us, so this isn't her first time stage managing. She was involved last year in the theater company. Um, I do wanna say that my first play was Charlie and the Chocolate Factory, and it was at Kelly School when I was in fourth grade. And I worked at Kelly School, and now I'm at Hoyoke High directing it. So I'm really excited to be able to bring it back. I'm pretty sure this is the exact script we did too. So it's very, just like, everything comes full circle, and we're just really excited about bringing the community in and filling the house this time, everybody. Filling the house. We really try to keep our ticket prices very low so we can get more supporters in. Um, so just be on the lookout for those very inexpensive tickets going on sale.
Like, double.
In what ways, uh, um, for myself and for others listening on, um, in what ways would this play help these young people facilitate their careers if they would pursue this as a passion of theirs?
Great question. So even if students aren't interested in pursuing an acting career, public speaking is the number-one thing that they're gonna learn. They're gonna be able to face that fear that many people have of public speaking. So for job interviews, it's really helpful because they're gonna be able to, that's stage fright. Even if you're going just to an interview to talk to one person, people get stage fright in those situations. So that's the number-one, um, that, that's gonna help them get into colleges. It's gonna look great on their resume. They're also learning how to collaborate with their peers. I'm the director of the show, but that doesn't mean I'm a dictator. So we work together really collaboratively in the process, and they come up with ideas and they work together. So especially like the Oompa Loompas are gonna have a really big say in like how we're moving, because we're gonna be working through rehearsals to build the movement. I have two really awesome students that are working on composing music for our show. So, um, we have Nicole Henchey, who's a senior, who has composed for multiple shows before us. And now she's training a younger student, Marquis Aponte, who's a, he's a younger student, and they're gonna be co-composing together. So we'll have original music again in our productions, both of our productions this year, which is really nice, because paying for the rights to music is really expensive. So it, it, it gives them experience, it gives them something on their resume. It also helps them for college if they're gonna be going for music and composition. So there's a lot of great ways that this helps them for the future.
Uh, Soto, then Calamore.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you for coming today and thank you for all you do. I know, um, when we talk about fostering a sense of belonging in Hoyoke Public Schools and giving opportunities to explore their interests, this is what this program is all about. I know for me, you know, it was sports, but sports is not for everybody, and I just appreciate, you know, as we push to, to make sure we have a sense of belonging for our students and making sure that we reengage them in a way that's meaningful and wants, makes them want to come to school. You, you exemplify that, and you do that for a lot of our students. So I wanted to thank you. And Damani, Damani was telling me he was nervous, more nervous about tonight than he was for the play, but it wasn't so bad, right?
On that note, now is the time to ask for more money.
Yeah, we love asking for more money. We've done it once, we've done it before, but we have had some really great sponsors. No, you don't. You've said yes. I got iPads for media class last year, which I really appreciate, and so do the students. So thank you very much. Just getting the word out to the community, though. If all of you all can come to the shows, we'd really love it. Try, we try to make them early, we try to make them not long. So if you guys could all come out and support us, that would be wonderful. So we'll...
Mr. Calamore?
Please see you then.
Are you gonna allow students to come to this performance free?
So what I've done in the past is I've done two for five dollars on student tickets, which I think is relatively cheap, uh, two for five dollars. So the students really like that rate. It gets a lot of people in, it helps families come. So we've, we've, we really do try to get the tickets very low. We have to pay for rights for the show, so already we've spent twelve hundred dollars on the show, and we haven't even bought costumes or anything to build the sets. So, um, it's just, you know, we have to pay to put these shows on, so it's important that we make back the money that we spend. But we're really fortunate that MIFA Victory Theater has supported us in the past, and they've given their word that they're gonna give us some money for this production too. People's Bank gave us fifteen thousand dollars last year. That's gonna help us out for the next four productions. Um, and then we just got paid five thousand dollars for doing the public service announcement with the Ad Council, so that money's going into our account as well. So, and that's a national public service announcement you're gonna see on television and all over social media, starting in the middle of October.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. So, great. I can't wait to come back and tell you about our next show as soon as I can.
Anyone else on the school board that had a comment, question? I do see, uh, Western Mass News is online, so I just wanna make sure that they, uh, put a plug in for the upcoming Hoyoke High School Theater Company play, inviting the public to, uh, be on the lookout and get those tickets so we could have sold-out shows. Thank you, Western Mass News.
Thank you. And they always send, they always send somebody over to interview our kids too, which is great. So we love that.
They're always supporting Hoyoke in a positive way.
Definitely. Who else?
Thank you, Bevan.
Thank you so much for having us.
Thank you, guys.
Mayor Garcia, don't leave my hand up.
I don't. I, I do now. Uh, Representative Erin Brunel. What's up?
That's okay, thank you. I just wanted to thank you guys for coming in. Bevan, as always, is part of the theater program, the Shining Light film, for decades. And I look forward to seeing the show, and, uh, the future expansion, please.
Thank you, Erin. We did public comment. Alright, communications and reports. We have here student reports from our esteemed student representatives. Who wants to go first?
Alright. Uh, my name is Jamie Rivera. I am filling in for, uh, Evan Kennedy as the dean, campus, school, and... Oh. Uh, prep. I am a sophomore in the culinary program. Thank you for this opportunity this evening to represent my school. Today, I just have a few updates to deliver. New schedule, A-B week schedule. We are going into our fourth week of school. This week of tenth and twelfth grade students are in academics. One of the new courses offered at Dean is the College and Career Course. We are learning about what we will do after high school or which career path we will take. As far the course is doing, is going good, we set some goals that are helping my, myself and my, and my classmates to figure out what we are interested in. I know this course is offered to the ninth grade. This will be helpful as they go through exploratory. The schedule gets exciting when you get into eleventh and twelfth grade. The weekend shop will open up co-op opportunities for us and, and opportunity to help up our shops to the community. MCAS is on the minds of most tenth-grade students. We are all aware of how important this year is. Overall, it has been an amazing start to this, to the year, getting to see my friends and learn from new teachers. That's all I got.
Very good. Any questions, school board members? Thank you for the report, and we have, what's your name? Is it? You got a microphone on?
Hello, my name is Jake Lee Santos. I attend HHS North Campus, and I am a senior. So last week, the Ad Council worked with Hoyoke High School to put together a filmed PSA to help aid in overall awareness around fentanyl and drug use for teens. About forty students were in the ad, and students were able to see and be a part of all aspects of the filming. Watch for the release that will come sometime mid-Novem-, um, October. The counseling department held an assembly for all seniors planning to attend a four-year college last week. There will be other college and career events throughout the year. We also have our tenth-grade academies who had their first town hall. It is the first time they've come together, and they've built, um, a community-building activity related to the content of the academy, and we were able to celebrate students for the academic performances. Seniors also recently held their senior sunrise, as well as created senior parking spots. Student government is also holding freshman elections. Student government is also planning to do Friday spirit theme every week. This week, we will be having a pajama day. We have decided to have fun, interactive events every five weeks between teachers to build the school community and have students interact with each other. Within the next two weeks, we are planning a teacher tug-of-war. We are also planning on hosting some of these interactive events during lunches. The first one we are thinking about would be a dad joke contest between two teachers. Also, student government has decided for home games for the football season to have certain themes. Last Friday, we pulled off a neon theme event. As October rolls around, we are thinking of doing pink for breast cancer awareness month. Also, we are pleased to announce that a group of teachers and students have been selected for the virtual learning exertion to Vista Unified School District and Mission Vista High School. The purpose of this virtual trip is to see the new and exciting school practices they're implementing and how we might be able to apply them to HHS. The schools that we are visiting are in California, and the team is very excited for this new opportunity.
Wow.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the student representatives? Thank you so much for the report, for your time. Oh, we got one.
I just wanna say that I saw some of the parking spaces, and I think that's really great, that, you know, people are decorating them, and they're taking so much effort and time and putting so much care into having their, um, spaces be really remarkable.
I love it. Uh, next item on our agenda here, we have, it just says presentations. Are we expecting?
No, just superintendent.
So no, no presentation? The next item on the agenda, item, agenda, uh, letter C, superintendent receive reports. We have a series of them, so I'll pass it now to the superintendent for his reports.
Alright, great, thank you. How do you sign up for the, uh, tug-of-war?
I'll watch.
Josh said he wants to do the dad jokes.
I was gonna say, have the two of you go against each other.
He really said that.
The two of you.
I'd, I'd lose. Just, just, I don't...
Alright, so today, we, uh, if we could just pull up the presentation, I just wanted to, uh, provide a, a return-to-school update, uh, which involves just giving a brief update on enrollment, attendance, like we normally do. I do wanna talk about, a little bit about our, our attendance campaign. And then, um, many of you are aware of, of the work that we had been engaged with, was, with Relay. I wanna, I wanna talk about how that's really contributed to, to a strong start of the school year and a heavy focus on making sure students are getting what they, what they need. Uh, we'll give a quick update on COVID-19. There's not much to report there. And then I wanted to, uh, update all of you on our, uh, race equity and inclusion professional development that, that we have this year. Um, and then we'll switch gears and talk about, uh, provide a quick update on the middle school building and rezoning, which has been going really well in terms of getting, getting outreach there and getting input from a lot of people. So the first update is on enrollment. So, uh, that would be slide three, I believe. Yep, next slide. Um, here, we just have a breakdown of our enrollment. Right now, Hoyoke Public Schools is, is at about four thousand nine hundred and forty-one. Um, it is the beginning of the school year, so there's a lot of cleanup that we have to do in our student information systems. Um, so right now, this is just a rough estimate of where we're at. Um, how it compares to last year is we were at about five thousand sixty-nine. And the trend really is, is there's been a slight increase in, in, uh, high school uh, of about one, and then a, a decrease in the, in the grades one to eight, uh, uh, offset by an increase in, in pre-K and K. So we expected that, as many of you, uh, we, every time we've come to you and, and given you an update on enrollment. Um, last year during the pandemic and the year before, we saw a significant decrease in pre-K. Um, so that, that's, uh, you know, I think more people have chosen to, uh, to homeschool, and just overall, we're, we're slightly down from, from the year, from last year. Um, the next slide is really just a breakdown of the enrollment. You each have a copy of the, the slide deck. Um, it breaks it out, grades one to eight and nine to twelve. And then the next slide, you can see pre-K and K. Biggest takeaway is that, um, enrollment is slightly down from, from last year, and it's in grades one through eight, not the high school and not, uh, pre-K and K. Now, now I wanna switch over to attendance. Um, if you look on slide eight, uh, we had, we have a better start of the school year than we did last year. Last year, we, we averaged about eighty-five percent. Um, and so far, for the first few weeks of school, we're at eighty-nine percent. That's nowhere near where we were pre-pandemic. Um, but it, it's, it's very, you know, um, I feel very good about us moving in the right direction, but we still have a lot of work to do. Again, there's, there's data cleanup that we have, uh, to do, especially early on in the year. Um, but where we were pre-pandemic was about ninety-five percent. So that's the target. That's where we wanna, that's where we wanna be. That's where we wanna get to. We know how important attendance is to, to student outcomes. Um, so we, we definitely wanna, wanna see those numbers go up. And on chronic absenteeism, we, we know we regularly come to the school committee and provide an update on that, but it's just too early. If a, if a student misses one day, he's already chronically absent, right? So it doesn't necessarily make the most sense to start reporting out on those numbers, but as we go through the year, we'll be sure to, to keep an eye on, on students that are chronically absent, because we know how important, um, how, how the data has shown students that are chronically absent are, are least likely to graduate on time, and we wanna make sure that, that our students do. Uh, next slide is attendance year by year. You can see, and it's also broken down by, from elementary to high school. So you can see, we saw a slight increase in, in elementary, uh, up to ninety-one point seven percent. That, that's up from eighty-six percent last year. Again, these are just the first few weeks of school. Um, and you can see at the high school, we're at eighty-six percent when we were at eighty-four. Um, I wanna, the, the Opportunity Academies is also, um, a part of the high school data that we have there. So that's the North Campus Dean and Opportunity Academy. Um, nothing on the next slide, really, it's, it's just a breakdown by school. Um, nothing super alarming. It's consistent with the last few slides, but you got a breakdown by school, and you have that in your packet. The next slide is a breakdown of our high school attendance. So you can see the, what the North Campus, the North Campus is at about eighty-seven point four percent, and Dean's at ninety, while Opportunity Academy is at, at sixty-nine percent. Um, many of you know Opportunity Academy really gets at students that were at risk of dropping out, um, normally. In, in many cases, these were students that the district had forgotten about, and we've created programming to reengage them and, and give them an opportunity to, to finish, uh, high school in a maybe-not-so-traditional route, but, but finish nonetheless and get the right supports. Um, so we typically see attendance rates, uh, a little lower than the other two high schools. That's not, um, that's not out of the ordinary. Um, I, this next slide is really let, let the committee know that we are tracking medically-related absences, although some of the COVID, um, restrictions that were in place previously in terms of quarantining and, um, at, you know, quarantining for ten days, a lot of that stuff had been lifted, but we, we strongly believe it's still important for our family engagement team and for our attendance officer and for the district as a whole to track, um, these medical-related absences so that we, when we do do outreach, we know, uh, what students we want, we want to outreach to and what families we wanna, wanna follow up with. Next slide here just, uh, provides a breakdown of our elementary and middle school subgroups, the attendant rates, um, as they, they compare to students that are students with disabilities and not disability, uh, students without disabilities, and then, um, our English language learners and, and non-LEP students. Uh, you could see that, it's pretty consistent. Historically, there's been a, a wider gap between those groups, but as, as, um, for the first few weeks, we haven't seen that. And we just wanna make sure that we are regularly breaking down our data this way so that we can pivot whenever we need to and make sure that the students, uh, that, that need the most support are getting it. so that we can, um, pivot whenever we need to and make sure that the students, uh, that, that need the most support are getting it. You can see here that same data in the, at the high school level. We move to the next slide. Um, this, this next slide is really about, uh, I, I mentioned earlier that, that schools are still working on cleaning up their data. So, um, this is as of the first few weeks, but there's a significant amount of students that, that haven't shown up from the, since the first day of school. Or, so, you know, our leading hypothesis here could be that they've withdrawn and haven't let us know, could be that they moved. But these are gonna, uh, impact our, um, attendance rates. Once we clean up this data, then we'll have more accurate information. Um, but we're, I'm, I'm so happy that we have this, um, we have a data dashboard now that we didn't have in the past. Uh, it's through Open Architect. And at any point, any principal can go in and pull up high-level information, and not just pull up high-level information, they can drill down to the details. Um, so much so that we were talking about this at Cabinet the other day, and, and all of these percentages are, are, are tied to a student. We could drill down to those students that, you know, out of the ten days that we had school, they missed four, right? Or they miss, these students not, you know, we're, we're more concerned this is a data cleanup, but the students that have missed four days out of the ten days, um, our, our team is really focusing on them right now to find out with the family, like, hey, what's going on? Why have, why are they absent? Is there any support that we could give them? And to just stress the importance of, of getting your kids to school on time and, and every day. Before I move on to the attendance campaign, which is a nice transition, are there any questions so far?
Gustavo, do you have a question?
Yes.
Collumore?
Short, do you need help in, uh, working to getting these students back into the?
I mean, that's a, that's a tough, we're not short in terms of vacancies, right? So we have one attendance officer across the entire district. And our fa- each school has a family engagement coordinator, Family Access and Engagement Coordinator, and a portion of their time during the day is spent on outreach and, and, uh, and attendance. So every school has somebody that's monitoring this. We are short one person, um, at one of our schools. Uh, but, but for the most part, we're, we're, we're pretty well-staffed in that area. More so than we've ever been. Like, we have more, more face coordinators than we have in the past.
Because it's very important that come October first, that's when, uh, the report is into the state for enrollment. Depends on a lot on, on our financial input for the city of Holyoke.
Yeah. Yes, I, I agree with you and, um, that, that we have an entire team that, that a portion of their time is, is dedicated to reaching out to these families and finding out why they're, you know, why they haven't shown up to school yet.
Aaron Fontaine? Aaron Brunel. I see on, on my,
You can call me Fontaine. It's okay. Just don't do it on TV.
Aaron Brunel.
Um, um, so I had a couple of questions, um, to Mr. Collumore's point, what is that final date for enrollment information? Um, I'm not sure if it's October first, but I know it's in October.
So the, the reporting date for when we're funded, they use October one. But you have until the, you have until the end of October to certify your October one information. So our data team is working with our school leaders and our front office staff, scrubbing through that data and checking it and auditing it through the entire month of October. And then before they submit it to the state for, uh, for certification, uh, they, you know, there, there's a series of reports that I review and, and I follow up with, with certain principals if, uh, you know. But there was one year where, where we weren't counting any of our vocational students that were in, um, the, that were in the exploratory program. They weren't being counted as vocational students, and it led to, uh, you know, a, a million dollars. It, it was like a million-dollar error, and the state didn't, you know, they, they couldn't correct it. So it, you know, that, that was a, a huge lesson learned on our part to, okay, like, every time October one comes around, we gotta check our vocational information. We gotta check our economically disadvantaged numbers, our ELL, all, all of the numbers that actually translate to, um, to, uh, that are important to that October one deadline. We, we have certain audits in place to make sure something like that doesn't happen again.
So my follow-up question is, of that eighty-six, the eighty-six students that we have enrolled, say, from last year that haven't shown up yet, you know, obviously you guys are doing your due diligence. You'll be able to figure out majority of this, but what happens to the few that we can't find? If we can't find that they've enrolled elsewhere, if we can't connect with family, if we can't prove that they are or are sh- like should or shouldn't be enrolled, are we allowed to drop them from our enrollment? Or does that number affect us throughout the school year?
Um, you are not allowed to withdraw a student without proper documentation. So we continue to do our due diligence until we get the documentation that we need. In fact, we've done that in the past, Erin, and, um, I've been in, it's, it's been an audit finding for the last two audit cycles that the, what the state does is they come in and they pick, they select a sample of withdrawn students. And if you don't have proper documentation, they, they basically put it as a, as an audit finding. So we've had that in the past, and we, if, we've established, we've changed our procedure so that, um, when we are considering a student withdrawn, we go through the process of making sure we have the right information to make that determination.
Okay, and then I just happened to notice that you didn't have anybody for MedCaf on that list. Is that an error or is that just there's nobody missing for MedCaf?
There's probably, there probably don't have a student that, that hasn't shown up all year. So you could see Ian White only had one student.
I just find that really, um, really interesting because MedCaf is basically a lottery, right? And it just goes to show that, and you know, Ian White is even half dual-language at this point. So I just think that that's an interesting case to see and to prove how, how valued our, our program that we've created is to show that, you know, people are coming. So I just think that's interesting.
Yeah, good point, cuz I see Ian White, you have.
Yeah, we got one at Ian White, one at Dean, one at STEM, one at McMahon, one at Sullivan. So, um,
The main problem seems to be at Holyoke High North, which is expected because it's a big school. And I think the high school age is the age that tends to be in and out. Sorry if you guys can hear my dog.
I think your dog agrees.
Yeah.
Uh, Yadi Let.
My questions were answered. Erin took them, so, thank you.
And, and I will say that the, I know I've said this ten times since the meeting started. This data's being cleaned up. Since, since the time this was put together, I know of like two or three students that actually graduated in the summer that are on this list. Right? So that tends to happen. If they graduated through Opportunity Academies or something like that, and, and the main office hasn't received the information to, to put that in the system, they still show up as, as being enrolled and not attending. So we're working through this data and we'll make sure we get it cleaned up.
Gustavo?
I just wanna point this out real quick. My, my red flags come up with, um, with PEC and Holyoke High, um, Middle, I mean, Holyoke Middle School, um, which are like the biggest absentees as of now. I would just keep my eye on those, you know?
Yeah, I would. We, I mean, we keep our eye on all of this data, um, and we do, you know, that, that trend has been a trend for a while. I mean, if you look at the, the neighborhoods that these zones are, are pulling from, from, um, you know, it tends to be, you know, um, different, you know, that's, that, you know, for example, Lawrence, it, it houses a lot of our families that are experiencing displacement, um, or housing displacement. Um, you know, and, and, uh, those schools that you mentioned also happen to have a higher uh, rate of economically disadvantaged and LEP and students with disabilities. I'm not saying that that's a direct correlation to attendance, but that is a trend that we have been seeing and tracking for many years now.
Sorry about that. I, um, I was saying that, um, that the, um, COVID data also impacted the attendance, so I see the correlation between the two as well. But, um, we'll keep an eye on, on PEC because Holyoke Middle and, um, PEC and STEM are basically the ones under the red line in attendance, and they're all in the same building, and I would just keep, keep an eye on it.
Yeah, and I'll just add, um, that the, based on the, this data that you have in front of you, we've asked our attendance officer to focus on two schools, Holyoke High North and the Holyoke Middle School. So that's where, you know, that's the, those are the schools that he's targeting this week. To make sure that all of the outreach and follow-up and, um, happens.
Any other questions, Soto, before he moves on? From our student representatives? Just so you guys know, you guys, feel free, if you have a question, just wave at me, let me know, and I'll acknowledge you, okay?
Great. So the next section of this is our new attendance campaign. And I'll say that it just makes me real proud. We were, um, I was sitting down with the, uh, the attendance officer and, uh, the family engagement team at our end-of-year, uh, celebration. We had it at the Holyoke Country Club. And we were having, you know, we were just having so, some dinner, um, and talking about the school year. And at that table, um, I felt like I was bombarded by the family engagement team to say, Anthony, this strive for five thing is not working. We need something, we need something better, um, for our families, uh, that, that's more informative and that really resonates with, with where we are today. And I said, sure, like, I agree. Why don't you guys come up with something and, and bring it back to me? Um, and the summer went by, you know, we, we're all like in crazy planning mode. And all of a sudden, I see an invite on my calendar from the, from Stephanie and Gesara and the team. And they had a whole presentation laid out. They had data, they had everything. So this is what we call leading from your seat, and we try to teach this to our staff. Like, you don't need to be, um, in a, you don't need to be the superintendent or the assistant superintendent to lead. You can lead from where you're at. Um, and they really embodied that. And they said, okay, we got the green light, let's go. And they did the work. So I'm really thankful and, and proud of the fact that they just took it and ran with it. They didn't wait to be told what to do. They, they just displayed such great leadership, um, in, in coming up with this attendance campaign. So, the next slide is why? We think that we need to create stronger messaging to our families that tie attendance to student outcomes. We wanna be able to tell our families why it's important to get their student to school. Oftentimes, when we talk about attendance with our families, it's usually punitive or like, it feels like, uh, like, like they did something wrong. And we really wanna go on a campaign, um, to just educate folks on the statistics and the data around why it's important to come to school. And stressing that, like, coming to school, your child is gonna have a better, uh, uh, it's gonna have a better chance at being successful in school and beyond. We've looked at a ton of data, um, you know, students that have, uh, an attendance rate of ninety-two percent or more. This is Holyoke. This isn't national. This is just Holyoke. We've seen in our own data that if they, if they attend ninety-two percent or more, they're more likely to be on track. Their chances are doubled, uh, by the grade nine and ten. So a student's chances are doubled if their attendance is ninety-two percent or better. We want our families to know that. In grades K to eight, ninety-two percent attendance or more, students are, uh, suspended four point two percent of the time versus with less than ninety-two percent, twelve percent of the time. That's a, that's an interesting, you know, uh, data point that we've, we've dug into a little bit. So, uh, students that are absent more often, um, tend to, uh, for, for whatever reason, uh, probably because, you know, the law, loss of learning or the insecurity from not knowing where you're at. Like, if, if I'm sitting in a class and all of my classmates, you know, had five more days than me, I'm, they're probably a little more confident than I am to participate. And when you're disengaged as a student, it could lead to things like, um, things like this. And then you, there's another data point there, but the, the point is, these are some of the strong reasons why we feel, uh, we wanna educate our families on making sure that they attend school more regularly. And how, our new slogan, which is on the next slide, instead of the strive for five, we are going with.
So can you tell me, what's the input from parents? Are they giving any suggestions on how to take this work?
Um, I don't know if we solicited, well, we, we've solicited in, a lot of input from parents on, you know, during the entry plan process and the strategic planning process. I don't know that we've, uh, I know we haven't, I don't know if, if Stephanie or Gesara know. We haven't had a workshop yet on, you know, um, to solicit their input on this particular uh, attendance campaign unless I stand corrected from, uh, Stephanie Garcia and Gesara.
Alright, hello? Can you hear me? Hi, good evening. Um, Stephanie Garcia, Family Access Coordinator at Donahue School. I'm with my coworker Gesara Burgers from STEM. So as we engage with families and attendance, we get a lot of input from them. And the thing, we designed this campaign, it came to our mind because of that. Um, I think what we had, we noticed it was kinda like, not the lack of knowledge, but the balancing of vacations, doctor's appointments. So that's why we wanted to approach this campaign more like an educational campaign to our families. Cuz they know the process. They know, you know, if you miss certain days, you get an attendance letter. They know the procedures that we have in place to support them, but it was more like the mentality change of why it's important to have your school, your students in school a hundred and eighty days of the school year. So that's kinda like the campaign comes in. It's more like an informative campaign to families. It's not like once at the end of the year, you had a big celebration. That was the one before that we had the under five, that it was waited for the end of the year, and if you have five, then you will get like a prize. So this campaign is a little bit different where we're educating the parents about the benefits of being in school, and we're doing it gradually. You know, we have a message that comes out at the beginning of the three months, then we have a different message for the winter and so forth. So the attendance slogan, um, as Mr. Soto was alluding to, was attend today, achieve tomorrow. And the message about it behind it is there's three hundred and sixty-five days in the school year. We want your, your student in our school building for six hours, oh, only a hundred and eighty of those days. And then as the year progresses, we're building the information. We'll be, was, uh, we're doing this also. I don't know if you guys heard of, um, PBBIS, Positive Interventions. So we're taking that model and also copying it with the parents. Where we doing gradually, we're doing ice cream parties on Fridays. Where we doing gradually, we're doing ice cream parties on Fridays. As you noticed in the previous slides, our attendance are usually lower on Fridays. So we want to target on Fridays. We have ice cream parties for those kids. So that kind of like incentivizes them to come on Fridays and then they'll be tugging on dads. Like, oh no, I can't miss today because we're having our celebration for attendance. I don't think that answered your question.
Very good. Thank you.
Can I just ask, can I just, I think, can I make a comment?
What, Erin?
So I think it's really great that you're moving in this positive direction. Um, and I think, you know, we all see that there's been, you know, some long-term effect of COVID with higher anxiety, you know, more students having difficulties getting to school. And I think moving into this attend today, achieve tomorrow really fits what we need now, especially with getting our students back in school and really, you know, just having them know. I mean, it, we always know, but having it right there smack dab, plain and simple is just perfect.
Right. And it's also not, we don't want to penalize the families. It's also like, we want to focus on the positives. So even if they miss, we're like, a, a new day is a brand new day to start. So even if you miss a couple of days before, but you have a, a good week, a good month, then we celebrate that.
Thank you so much. I think I could skip this slide because Stephanie, Stephanie went through it.
Well, it's not, we were gonna.
Yeah, I, I think you're stealing their thunder, but you know, it's okay.
Okay. Um, we also have a new logo here. Uh, you can see it at the bottom, bottom, um, right-hand side. So how we're going to do it, really it's through, um, on the next slide, you can see, you know, what I have told Stephanie and Jessara and the team is just let us know what you need and we'll, we'll support it. So they came up with really cool ideas. Um, she just talked about, uh, incentivizing Fridays. We, we'll, we'll have banners at every school like you saw for the strive for five. We want to have, um, lawn signs and posters. And I like the cool T-shirt that, that they designed here where it has our new slogan of attend today, achieve tomorrow. But it also has some important facts about why, why it's important. You know, if you're, if you're standing in the grocery store, you're reading that on the back of somebody's shirt. I know I do when I, when, when somebody's in front of me, I'm like, what does that say? Uh, but, but they did it, they just did an amazing job and I want to thank them for it. Um, and, and let, the, the purpose of today was to let all of you know that this campaign is kicking off. So when you see attend today, achieve tomorrow around the city, um, you're able to, to, to articulate to your constituents why, why we, why we changed it from strive for five. And I also wanted to acknowledge the hard work that, that went into it. I know, um, Stephanie and Jessara are, are leaders for the fam- family engagement team, but they also, you know, they're, they're, they take a shared leadership approach and work with all of their team members, um, in, in, um, in developing what we came up with. So, so thank you.
Irene.
Just, you guys said that you guys are going to take the data every three months? Uh, like how are you?
That's the messaging.
Okay.
We, and going back to what you guys were talking about attendance, it made me want to say a couple of things. Every week, we meet as a team. Each, like at Donahue, we do a weekly, other schools may do a weekly, um, bi-weekly, but the, I mean, um, we can't wait there more than two weeks. And we, because attendance is not just our job, it's everybody's job. So there's a group of people that come together and analyze the data. And depending on the data, we see on the trends, we intimate, we do case management. We have, we come up with a plan. That's when sometimes we do the home visits, we, you know, do the home visits to check on kids. We do the home visits to reward parents that are doing well. Like I said, we want to just do both, not just focus on the, you know, you get a letter, we're going to follow you, things like that. These are kind of like, I printed this out, wasn't on the slide, I could pass it out to you. This is kind of like the motto that we're following, which is really looking at each individual case and case manage it. Like for example, at Donahue, I know why my two kids are not there. And we're working with them through them. One of them is a medical thing and the other one's a transportation thing. And I'm working with lots of the families to see if we can have some additional resources. And if I'm hitting a roadblock by tomorrow, I'm referring them to the hub. I'm not sure if you guys have heard about the hub. Okay. So that's, we have the, we partner up with community organizations. So if we can't help the families internally, then those are the steps that we do to support them.
Just one more thing, sorry. Uh, um, I just really love that you're doing, using the PBI. I think one of the things that we always focus on is like, when your child's out and it's just like, I'm going to send you that letter and you're like, oh, the school just sent me that letter again, right? Um, just to acknowledge, you know, the positive on it saying like, hey, we noticed your kid was here for 30 days straight, you know, and it's amazing, great job, because we don't recognize that. We don't recognize that. I mean, you have other obligations, there's work, you know, overtimes and all this other stuff. So, um, kudos to you guys. I love this. I love the yard signs and everything else because even like when we did the graduation and we put signs on everybody's homes and stuff like that, it was just great to see like families saying like, hey, look at, I'm doing good. And the neighbor is like, oh man, that family's awesome. Right? So kudos to you guys.
Thank you. Daddy left.
I just want to say thank you because this is really going to be different. And it's, it really matches our community and the things that we should be striving for. And I also think that there are different opportunities to show that data and to be able to have different T-shirts, right? Like you only have to be in school 49% of the year and that takes less time than reading the whole thing, right? Like there's different iterations that you can be bombarding people with information that's important, but that is going to be useful and it's going to be really enriching our learners. So thank you.
And actually, um, that is good that you bring that up, that point, because we wanted to ask you for your help with that. Cause as we're looking at the data, everything is very punitive. Everything is like, oh, by sixth grade, you missed, um, this amount of days, your kid will fail. So if you guys have little cat, like Mr. Steven gave us some, but if you have some that you want to send us to us, then that will help us with our messages. We are continuous messaging.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just add one that came up that was really good. We, we're saying 180 days, but when you break that down to hours, it's only six hours a day, right? So, and so it's even less when you break it down to hours. I, I mean, you could break it down to the minute or whatever, but there's still creative ways to, to show families like, look, there's all this time and it's really important to get your child to school during school as best as you can. Because the data shows that, um, they're more likely to be successful in school when that's the case. Thank you. And I'm sorry, I, I wasn't aware you guys were prepared to, to share out or to present. Sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right. The next section of our agenda is really the academic playbook, um, which is a quick update on our, our, uh, partnership with Relay Get Better Faster model. Uh, this is our second year in the partnership with, uh, Relay. And over the summer, about 95% of our expert teachers and all of our academic directors, um, and new school leaders participated in the, the summer of learning with, with Relay. Um, just to get them up to speed about, about what, what to expect and, and what's expected of them. And to give them the, the tools that they need to be able to effectively coach our teachers and, and have an impact on, on what's going on in the classroom. Um, we had a strong start and I think that, that 100% um, is, is a result of all the deep planning that was led by Jack Lee Gashin and Dr. Mahoney on, on really getting prepared for school. For the first time, schools have what we call an academic playbook. So we've mapped out with school leaders what to do in week one, what to do in week two, what to do in week three. And, and, and we're like, everything for quarter one has been planned out. Not just planned out, we, we've created a model, but they've done a lot of planning on their team, but we've provided them with the structures and expectations. And it looks, may look different at every school, but, but the, the structure and the system is the same. So um, I think that that's going to have, that, that contributed heavily to making sure we had a strong start. Um, in addition to that, if you, if you scroll to the next slide, that, that's just, uh, an example of what, um, the next slide, sorry. That's an example of what week one, uh, what the monit- what, what the playbook looks like for week one. So you can see under teacher skills, um, we were focusing on start, the, at the start of the class, the first five minutes, you know, what, what we expect to see in classrooms and what we expect principals to be looking for. Um, it looks a little different from week one to week three, but the point is, is that, that exists. The next slide shows, uh, week three. All of this information is then as principals are, are practicing this and, and going through their playbook and living it out every day, all of this information is being tracked and what it does is, and, and then aggregated. Jackie then takes every single principal's playbook and aggregates it so that when we review quarter one, we can look for trends, we can look for areas of concern, not in a punitive way, but to say like, all right, this is what we're looking at. What type of supports do principals need in this? And, and how do we, like, what's our professional development going to be out? This, this section of the playbook is fine. This one is a concern, then let's, then let's have professional development around that and model that. Um, so that schools can then turnkey it in their building.
I have a question.
Ellie.
So my question is, um, how many, um, I guess I'm going to use the term observations or walkthroughs, should a teacher expect in a week?
Um.
So I'm teaching my class, should I expect, you know, one, two? You know?
I don't know how many per teacher. I don't know if that's spelled out Jackie, like to that level of detail. But we do expect principals to be in classrooms every day. We do expect expert teachers to be in classrooms every day. With it, and I don't know if, why you're asking is if, if it is, if it feels like it's like to catch you doing something wrong or like, that's not what this is about. This is about to observe practice and to provide either reinforcing on, on like some positives that we've seen, but to provide some coaching. No one wants to find out at the end of the year on their evaluation that they were doing a terrible job, right? No one wants to know that. So if we provide real-time coaching to teachers, we strongly believe that, that that's going to have an impact on the quality of teaching that's happening in classrooms. And that's what this relay was, a, a big part of the, the relay, uh, partnership was around teacher observation and feedback. We want to do it right.
No, I understand and observation should be a part of education for, for any job. And you know, that's definitely part of learning and becoming better at whatever role you have. I'm coming from, you know, the fact that, um, I've heard from a few teachers who've left our system because they feel like it's they're, and I don't, I, I, I'm, I'm going to use the term because I can't think of a better one, but they feel like they're being inundated with observations. And they feel like they're doing the dog and pony show way too often. Um, and that, that's why I was asking, how many should an average performing teacher expect? I think that's a pretty simple question to ask. Should they expect one a week? Should they expect five a week? And I think it's something our, our teachers should know. Because no matter what, when someone comes in your room, you are going to be feeling like, oh God, they're here. Oh, no matter what.
What I say to that is that, that's, that's a culture that we're trying to embed into Holyoke Public Schools. But this isn't a gotcha. This is like you, as a teacher, you should expect people to be in your classroom. And what I've seen is that teachers, uh, have gotten a lot more comfortable than they were in the past because it's all in the messaging. I think that Jackie and Mahoney and the principals do a good job explaining to teachers why we're there. The purpose isn't to catch you doing something wrong. The purpose is to look at trends across the entire district. It's, it's to improve instruction and make sure that students are getting what they need. And the reality is Ellie, we, we have over a hundred new teachers every single year. So yes, you can expect regular visits from either an expert teacher or coach or your principal, or it might be if you're in a special ed classroom, you might see someone from the special ed department looking. But we want a culture, we want our teachers to know that that's, you know, that's not a bad thing. I know if I was a new teacher, I'd want you there every day. Tell me how I can be better. Um, I know that not everybody's like that and not everybody's there, but that's, that's, that, people need to be okay with that and, and like, it's a good thing. It's not a punitive thing.
John.
Thank you. Um, I'm kind of taking a different take of what, um, the previous speaker just said. If I was a teacher in the class, I'd be kind of, would kind of want my principal to come in and, and witness what I'm doing. I would kind of want to show off my skills. Okay. This is what I bring to the table. This is how my students are engaged. I would kind of be welcoming that. So I think any teacher that feels that, that they're being observed is a negative, probably doesn't really, you know, they're kind of dwelling on, um, the, the negative. That's how I take it. Thank you.
Yeah. I don't, Jackie, do you have anything to add or did I cover?
Jet, Miss Gashin, you want to come to the mic? Mrs. Gashin?
The purpose of the playbook is, is not an observation. Um, it is to build really the leader skill at knowing exactly what's happening on their campus and then being able to support where needed. You know, I expect principals that I work with in Holyoke to, to have at least 50 data points a week. So they're in 50 classrooms. So if you're at Lawrence, you're in the same classroom multiple times. If you're at Hoyoke High, Lori might, you know, she, she's given me data points of 73 classrooms a week because she has more classrooms. But at no time are any of those principals writing any teacher names down. They're going, um, across the management, really strong practices that we know and the academic rigorous practices that we know and finding trends on those. Geez. We really need to help. We see, um, 17 out of 20 classrooms are struggling with the first five minutes. I, as the leader, probably didn't teach that very well. So at my next PD, I'm going to model what that looks like. So my teachers understand what the expectation is. This isn't about teacher, you're bad. This is about, hmm, leader, if I'm not seeing what I stated was the expectation, did I do a good job of modeling that? And how can I build the capacity of my staff?
And I think, so I'm just going to quickly just say, I think that's great because so many times we hear about, you know, teachers thinking people, someone coming in my classroom, oh boy. And I love how it's such a positive perspective. And I just want our teachers to know that, you know, that's important for us to make sure that all of our teachers are hearing it, not just from their school or other schools, but here at this meeting as well.
And principals are also, um, weekly sharing the data and giving shout-outs. And when I'm in classrooms across the district, very often I'll say to a teacher, can I, can I video you for like 10 minutes, five minutes, 30 seconds? And can I share that? Because your work is exemplary and we want to highlight that. And we share that across the campus and across the district. So it's not about, I got, I got you. It's where are the strongest practices? How can we highlight that? And how can we ensure we're giving the best instruction we can to the kids of Holyoke?
Thank you, Jackie. I should have just had her cover this slide. Yeah.
Who can report on a COVID next?
Yeah. Um, so I, I think we can move on to the next slide, which is, um, our walkthrough, our tool. So, uh, last year at a quarter, the third quarter retreat, uh, one of the takeaways was that a lot of people, a lot of different people were going into classrooms and oftentimes they were using different tools. So, you know, our academic team was looking for one thing. Our special ed team may have been looking for another thing. Jackie was going in looking for something else. And what we saw is that wow, it would be really powerful if anytime anyone was going into a classroom, they were using the same tool. Cause instead of looking at 76 different data points, by the time we get to the end of the year, we might have a thousand data points that we can use to do exactly what Jackie was talking about. What are the things that are doing well that we might, might want to highlight? And where are we struggling where our principals might need more support? Um, so Jackie worked with, and Dr. Mahoney worked with, uh, our special ed team and worked with the academic team. And they all came up with one common tool. So anytime anyone's walking through our buildings, they're using the same tool and to date. anytime anyone's walking through our buildings, they're using the same tool. And today, we already have a hundred and twenty-six entries. And I think we were starting this week, we were starting moving from the in the playbook, moving to like, alright, now get into the classroom and start using this tool. And we already have a hundred and twenty-six entries. Cuz some of the schools were started using it on day one. Um, but this all goes to say that like, these are the systems and the structures that you all have been asked, like, what's our accountability? You know, how are we like, what supports are we give? These are the structures that have been put in place over the last uh couple of years that we strongly believe like, we're doing the right work and we know we're gonna get the outcomes eventually. But um, you know, the the these are some of the structures in place that that is gonna support that. Next slide. COVID nineteen. I will move really quickly because there's not a ton of a ton to update. We had about a hundred, next, next slide, please. We had about a hundred and thirty-six cases, student cases and um sixty-one staff cases as of September fourteenth. We are still working with our health services team. And if a parent allows, you know, a student is symptomatic, they they get tested right on the spot. Um, that that those are the protocols that we're we're following. And then lastly, we are working again uh uh in conjunction with the health center to make sure we offer no cost COVID nineteen vaccination clinics to students, families and staff. So um that the that data, all of that data is really to say like COVID hasn't gone away. We're doing everything we can to um to support the schools. We're not doing all the a a lot of the crazy, not crazy things, but a lot of the uh requirements that were imposed um in terms of contact tracing and all of that, that was really disruptive. And you saw our attendance data from last year. Part of the reason was, oh, you were you were three feet or five feet away from that student, you have to stay home for ten days. We're not doing that anymore. Um, and that's that's really uh the update.
John.
Thank you. Um, has the state like lowered their um reporting requirements from the schools in terms of, you know, daily report or weekly report? Are you reporting more to the the local board of health?
The board of health does all the handles all the reporting.
Okay, so your reports go to the board of health. From the board of health to the state?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Well, I think I don't know if they have access to the system. I don't know what if they're sending an email or not, but I I'm pretty sure they have access to the data once it's put into the system online.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Um, the next update is uh is on uh some a portion of our professional development. Um, the partnership with the Equity Imperative. They are working on developing a racial equity data point. So we put together a steering committee. And um as a working group, that steering committee consists of teachers, a counselor, um, a student, a a parent, and just different people from all across the district. Um, and and one of the things that the Equity Imperative is helping us do is select the racial equity data point that we should focus on and and create a an action plan around. And then the second thing they're doing is this multimedia learning platform. So this is uh this is basically them designing two courses that can be asynchronously taught. Kinda like the GCN trainings where you go online and you can do the, you fill out this. So there's gonna be some professional development like that. Uh, each course is about ten hours to complete, so we think it's gonna be over the course of of this year and next year. Um, there's uh, each course has three modules, again, ten hours in total. Um, each module consists of about two and a half hours of asynchronous learning, uh totaling seven and a half hours. So we're working through the details on like when people can take this. Um, and 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 then a part of this is also facilitated learning. So the, once the principal goes through it, the staff have an opportunity to go in and and go through the training modules. There'll be a two hour block during professional development that's facilitated at where where people can just talk. How do you feel? What did you think? Um, and and I think it's it's super important. Um, why does this matter? We know on the next slide, it matters. We know that academic data shows that uh the difference in learning experiences between students. We we looked at our attendance data, we looked at data between our students with disabilities and not disability, LEP and not we've broken down our data by race, we've broken down our data by uh student population and demographic, and we know that there are disparities in the data for sure. Um, so the we we're trying to get to the root causes of those, but it starts with our own learning. We know that staff learning about this is gonna is gonna really transform how how they instruct. On the next slide, I I just wanted to highlight we're starting with our principals and then roll like so that they're armed and equipped with with how to have these conversations in their schools. And then we're gonna roll this out to schools. I mean cafeteria workers, custodians, teachers, parents, everyone's gonna have an opportunity to engage in this learning. Um, and recently at a principal PD, principals go to professional development every uh every uh two weeks. And a portion of that learning is around race and equity. Um, I wanna, so one, this last one that we had, uh each principal filled out the implicit bias test and then had an opportunity to to digest, to just talk about it with their colleagues. Um, and also, one of the things that we did was was try to define, what does implicit bias mean to you? And I wanted to lift one of the, one of the um definitions that came up that I thought was really good. Um, it was implicit bias is embedded stereotypes that heavily influence our decision making without our conscious knowledge. And I think that that is so important. I've learned so much about myself. I mean, it's changed the way I interact with people. I I I'll give you an example, like my mother. She tended as as a kid, tended to over exaggerate everything. Everything, especially when she was mad. So when I interact with adults and they come to me mad, one thing that I'm learning is that I'm already assuming that they're over exaggerating. And that was based on my own lived. I didn't know that until I started really learning about this and reflecting on my own behaviors, right? And we think that this is uh so important because our beliefs of teachers' beliefs about their students and staff beliefs about their students really impact their actions towards them. Those actions towards their students leads to what students believe about themselves and their capabilities, which lead to their actions in life, which leads to their outcomes in life, which leads to a circle, then contributes to what teachers believe about their students. So we need to, it's a, it's really about deep learning and deep reflecting about your own biases in a structured way. That's gonna lead to change in action, that's gonna lead to improved student outcomes. I wanna share a small clip. And I think that, you know, this was emotional, this like, literally, we showed it with principals and we had two people in the room crying. Um, because anybody that says that this isn't critical race theory, this is, this is this is important work. And anybody says that it's not important, I I think you can look at this video. It's only a minute and a half. And you can see what three and four year olds believe about themselves. Can we uh pull up the video, please?
In Brown versus Board of Education, the famous case that desegregated schools in nineteen fifties, Dr. Kenneth Clark conducted a doll test with black children. He asked them to choose between a black doll and a white doll. In most instances, the majority of the children preferred the white doll. I decided to reconduct this test as Dr. Clark did to see how we've progressed since then.
Can you show me the doll that you like best or that you'd like to play with? That one? And can you show me the doll that is the nice doll? And why is that the nice doll?
She's white.
And can you show me the doll that looks bad? Okay. And can you give, and why does that look bad?
Because it's black.
Hmm, and why do you think that's a nice doll?
Because she's white.
And can you give me the doll that looks like you?
Fifteen out of the twenty-one children preferred the white doll.
Our ancestors came to the to this country and they were
So, these are three and four year olds. And they already think, they already have the conception and the thought that that being them is bad. And that's not, that's not to say that the schools did that. But that is a problem. Fifteen out of twenty-one, three and four year olds feel that way. Lot of our young ones, they don't, they they come into our schools feeling a sense of insecurity. Feeling like they're less than. And we need to do something. We need to make sure that in our schools, we're not perpetuating that. And that's why this work is important. We need to make sure that we're instilling confidence in them. That we that that they, that we're making sure that we have schools that foster a sense of belonging. And that we're we're making sure that we hold them to high expectations. And that over time, we do our part as a school district, not just in Holyoke, but across the nation, to to just do better.
Yeah, thank you for that. I mean, again, that's only a couple minutes. I mean, you can run you can run a documentary on that and then, you know, expand on that through society, you know, where do the kids get those beliefs from? You know, is it the mass media? Is it TV? Is it culture? I mean, um, when you watch a
Schools.
Schools, when you watch a western, you know, the bad guy dresses in black. Okay, that's what that's what always been portrayed that way. Okay, so that kinda that kinda filters down. And that's just one example.
Thank you.
I think that it's really important to go through this implicit bias test. Because they don't really give you time to think. They're really about what's deep, very deep in your subconscious. But the thing that is most important besides taking the test is what are your plans to do once you hit that blind spot, right? Like, how is it that I'm behaving? How is it that I'm making decisions that are gonna affect our students? That are going already through that lens, right? Like, when you're actually identifying what are the things that are your biases? Okay, so now I know that. But if you don't go through the process, then you don't know what those things are. And then you can't find them and you don't see them. So that's why this is really important, as long as the next step is also coming, which is what is your plan for the blind spots?
And that's, you know, to your point, that's that's what this professional development is all about, is first a a journey of learning. And then and then continuous learning. This work doesn't end, right? So the a common misconception or thought is like, oh, we did, we did the ready work, right? Like, no, it's, it never ends. It's continuous learning. Um, and then, which which hopefully leads to self-reflection and change in action that's gonna have a positive impact on student students' lives.
Jake Lee.
I feel that some schools can somehow embrace this, like Hoyokai North Campus. I know this for a fact that they do decide to embrace this. They'll do like Hispanic Heritage Month. And there's some classes that teach this and discuss the history of this. And I know that we have flags posted everywhere for Hispanics, cuz I know the majority of the school is Hispanics. But there's also groups such as Palante, and they help like restore this kind of balance in culture and everything.
Thank you, Jake.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Right. So that that concludes the back to school update. We got an update on the middle school building, which is on the next slide. I wanted to, we went in front of the MSBA. They have a subcommittee uh to to basically talk to us about our um our ed plan for the new building. Um, and I just wanted to give you guys, you all, an update as to where we were. We started with an introduction on everybody that was in the room. Our OPM, Margaret Wood, was there as well. Um, and and we just provided, uh on the next slide, you can see the agenda. Um, the the mayor introduced everybody that was there. Um, we 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 talked to them about our vision for the future for middle schools and talked about the rezoning process um and background information on the two buildings. Um, and then let them know how decisions were gonna be made and where we were at in the process with the three scenarios that we're presenting to the community. Um, and the one, another thing that they they thought was important is on the next slide. Um, sharing our outreach since twenty twenty. So you can see on this slide, we had so many meetings about this. We've had school committee meetings, we've had uh school building committee meetings, eleven of them. We've had community meetings. Um, we had a a lot of, a lot of different things went into uh where we're at right now, and we provided that update to the MSBA. And then on the next slide, um, the our our OPM, I know that's really small, but we are the to highlight it really, we reviewed three different possible timelines based on where we're at right now in the process. And all three of those um have scenarios where we could potentially open a new middle school um by the the fall of twenty twenty-six. Now, I will tell you that that timeline is really tight. Um, and the next steps in this process is really about selecting a model school designer. Um, and they're gonna be making uh making proposals in late September. We'll be able to review those proposals and interview them in October and then ultimately select one. Um, if we decide to go down the model school process, but that that yellow there, you can see that's where we we debated, when when should we be going to city council? To provide, to ask for the funding for the for the middle school. Um, and then that that was really it. Like, uh, I think there was a lot of dialogue, not I think. There was definitely a lot of dialogue when we talked about our ad plan and our schedule of possibly having um six periods. Um, there was a lot of dialogue around enrichment and using the term enrichment as opposed to essentials. Um, there was uh one board member on the MSBA that's really passionate about, you know, this, we shouldn't be referring to this as enrichment. The these are you know, music and art is not enrichment. It's really essential to a student's learning. Um, so that that was a huge takeaway that our team, that our team had. Um, and and uh you know, it's gonna shape our planning moving forward as we design, you know, the instructional model for for middle schools. And I'm at this point, I'm gonna call Erin to go through the update of the rezoning and then that'll conclude our presentation once we get through these.
Hi, everyone. Sorry, I haven't talked for a while. Uh, good evening. It's wonderful to see and hear everybody tonight. Um, just as a reminder, the school committee will be going, will have a retreat um in later, the later part of October to really go through and um Superintendent Soto is gonna bring the recommendations of all the outreach that we're doing. Um, so but it's, there's a lot here. So this is about just kinda building everyone's knowledge, not only school committee, but also sharing publicly. We met with more than three or five hundred people last week um at fourteen different meetings um to talk about rezoning and continued to get feedback. So it's, we're very much active in this process. Um, so we can go to the next slide.
The scenario development process was really thorough. So beginning in May, especially with the rezoning task force, which Ellie and Gustavo are 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 serving on, which is really fantastic. We developed rezoning guidelines. We knew that it would be, we'd be making difficult decisions. So how would we go about making the decisions? And then we determine which guidelines were most important and they receive like more weight weighted, like a higher amount of
like a higher amount of weight when we evaluate the scenarios. And then the cabinet team looked at a variety of scenarios from A to O. So I think that's fourteen or fifteen scenarios and decided on the best three. Um, then we worked with the APGEO consultants who are expert in like GIS and information system, geomap coding stuff. I'm not, um, smart enough to know how to do. Um, and we, for the favorite three scenarios, we analyzed anywhere between three and six maps for each scenario to try to get the best balance of, um, demographics and enrollment based on those rezoning guidelines. Then we identified the rezoning working group, um, identified the best map for each scenario. And then we evaluated, we evaluated each scenario and map against the guidelines. I took the initial cutout that and then, um, reviewed it and refined it with cabinet members. So it's been a process, um, that's been really thorough. Next slide. I'm sorry, can you hear me?
One second, please.
Erin, here's one minute.
All right, I think it worked.
Did you, did you find out what the issue was? Don't move.
We were hearing a lot of static, Erin. I don't know that it was on your part. I thought we had the mic on, but. Okay.
So Erin, I was actually the whole, she gotta start from the beginning.
Okay.
I'm just kidding.
No.
Oh, yeah, like I will, sorry for everyone online.
I'm joshing you.
Ha, ha, ha. Good play on her.
That joke number one right there.
I'm hoping we can get to three by the end of the meeting. Um, I do see Ms. Brunel's hand. Would you like to chime in with something, Erin?
Oh, I'm sorry. That was just regarding the school building, um, the school building committee update. Um, sorry, I tried to get in before you, but I didn't want to interrupt you. Uh, just a note to the committee members, if you, uh, read what was given to in your packet, we actually are not meeting on September twenty-second. We had canceled that, um, just because we don't have enough to go over yet. So I just wanted to point that out to you guys that our next meeting is October sixth, not September twenty-second. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Erin. Um, okay, we can go to the next slide on rezoning. This is like a great, this is a great slide, so I would encourage printing it out if you need to refer back to something. Um, so this is our, these are the three scenarios. And you'll see across all scenarios, we have six elementary schools and two middle schools. And we're thinking about what life looks like in 2026. Um, because remember with building a new PEC, we can't be in the building when it's being built. Um, the different scenarios have a different number of pre-K or schools that will have pre-K and that's just based on space available. Um, the tightest schools will be Ian White and McMahon in terms of, um, not potentially having space for pre-K. And then you see where dual language in elementary school is located in each scenario. So looking at the Dunnehugh Middle scenario, um, in blue, you see that, um, Ian White is the all dual language school, which would be four homerooms per grade. Currently, there are two, there are two dual language homerooms per grade. So basically, the Metcalf students would primarily, but not necessarily all, be moving over to Ian White. And then Kelly would become a half dual language school, partial dual language. So they'd have some dual language classes and some English-only classes. And then you see in the Kettle, Kelly Middle scenario, Ian White is still an all dual language school. But then Morgan becomes the half dual language elementary school so that we can preserve having dual language in two locations in the city. Um, especially in the neighborhood, in a neighborhood that serves a lot of Ls. And then in the Sullivan Middle scenario, Ian White is a half dual language school like they are now, though, though we would do two English, um, only classes. And then Kelly becomes the all dual language school. This is impossible to remember, which is why I recommend printing this one. And then, um, by having those, sorry, did someone say something?
Yeah, just give us a sec again. Just got a situation over here.
For those online that don't know what's going on, we're having technical difficulties in the fifth field room and the mayor and superintendent are trying to figure that out.
Thanks, Erin.
Good. Your audio's always been clear. There's something wrong with the speakers here that we're, we're receiving a lot of stack.
I'm gonna keep on talking so that you have more data points to figure out if I'm clear or not.
Yes.
Um, Sam, if you could email, if you could text me and let me know if I should start, if I should keep on talking, that would be great. Okay, I got a thumbs up, so I'm gonna keep going. I, it's so exciting to have, to continue to see the growing dual language program. So we'll have six classes, um, you know, starting in kindergarten for dual language. And by the time we get up to sixth grade with attrition, we expect to have four full-size classes. And you'll see across all the scenarios, um, it, PEC, PEC building would have the half dual language program. And unless in the Kelly scenario, when it would be Kelly would have the half dual language programs since they have expertise developing with dual language. And then all scenarios meet our ideal amount of enrollment, um, per grade level in order to have those strong teacher teams and, and enrichment variety we've talked a lot about. And then, then one of the rezoning guidelines was program continuity from elementary to middle school. And this really means like, a, as a, as a child in elementary school, will I be going to middle school with most of my peers? And in the Sullivan Middle scenario, that's true. Like with three elementary schools perfectly feed into one middle school and vice versa. In the Dunnehugh Middle scenario, this almost perfectly happens except for the TIP program, which is for student, it's therapeutic intervention program. It's for students with emotional disabilities. They would not, they'd be able to stay with their TIP peers, but not their school peers. Um, and then in the Kelly Middle scenario, the feeder pattern is broken where in four out of the six elementary schools, they would feed into both middle schools. And although we looked at a, a lot of scenarios to try to have that not happen, it was basically required to have happen, it happen if we wanted to balance the demographics of the, um, middle school so that they would be more equal. And then, um, across all scenarios, it, it, starting in 2023, Holyoke Middle is closed permanently. PEC would be closed temporarily as we try to build a new PEC. Um, and then once we get a new PEC online in 2026, that's when STEM and Metcalf grade six to eight would close. It could be 2027. If we don't get the funding, it could be earlier, but we wanted to just, we wanted to be able to plan with that in place because we know that moving students is disruptive. Does the committee have any questions or can I move on? Great, we can go to the next slide. Um, so here are the rezoning guidelines. The, the heavier weighted ones were determined most important. Three points was for the very important and one point was for the importance. And then in their evaluation, we assigned it a rating of four meant it, it fully met all the criteria. Three is mostly met, two is partially, and one was does not meet. Next slide, please. And here for folks' reference are the guideline, is the definition for each guideline. So, you know, what does it mean to design schools that put student needs first and prioritize money spent on instruction? The, the biggest determinants based on, um, the rezoning task force and the survey were that that meant sufficient, um, number of classes, students and teachers per grade level, um, teacher teams and not operating more schools or school buildings than necessary. Under ensure equitable access to special programs, it meant things like dual language in elementary being in at least two parts of our city, having program continuity for students with autism to more restrictive, like the ABL program, to, um, less restrictive through the Supported Inclusion Program in the same school from K to five, um, access to enrichment opportunities for all kids and pre-K classes offered at many schools, um, across the city. Next slide. A very important consideration was balancing student demographics across schools. And the more we talked to folks, it seemed that this was especially important for middle school. So we looked at racial and socioeconomic diversity, percent of students with disabilities and Ls, and also made a commitment to, um, better distribute, um, students experiencing homelessness across, across more schools so that the schools could better meet their needs. Next slide. Also under very important ensuring program continuity from elementary to middle school, this is what I was talking about, like those three elementary schools feeding into one middle school. Other pieces that were this were students in sub-separate programs, having access to inclusion opportunities and, um, pre-K classes being located at, um, like if you, if you, first, like the ABL pre-K classes is being at the schools that were gonna have ABL services K to five to the extent possible. Ms. Brunel?
Yeah, so just a question about the ABL. So I was speaking with a para today, um, and they were under the obsession, uh, assumption that all ABL was gonna go to one school. Um, and I didn't feel like that, well, I'm hoping that that wasn't accurate because I mean, we're always trying to do, to be more inclusive, not exclusive. So to me, if they all went to one school, um, it wouldn't, it wouldn't seem right. Um, so I don't, you know, I'm assuming correctly, if I'm wrong, that they wouldn't necessarily be all going to one school, right?
That's a terrific question, Erin. So, um, definitely like across all of this, like we had to plan with the students that we have in sub-separate programs now, but as you know, from being involved, the strategic plan does push for more inclusion opportunities. So if you're, if your child has autism, it doesn't necessarily mean they're gonna be just at one or two schools. Um, right now, the majority of the, um, students served in the ABL program, K to five, are all at Dunnehugh School, which is why it has a rate of, one of the contributing factors to be, having a rate of forty percent students with disabilities. That, when you have that many ABL classes in one school, we're finding it limits the inclusion opportunities. So cabinet and, um, and based off feedback over time from Dunnehugh made the decision to have ABL and SIP services at two different locations. Um, and they, it very, but in Dunnehugh would still be one of the locations. In the Dunnehugh Middle scenario, it would be for middle school, otherwise it's for elementary. And then at the middle school level, ABL services, since the school is much bigger, would just be at one school.
Okay, and then, um, another point that we got into discussing is that we're not, um, screening kids in preschool and kindergarten. Um, and that, that's really setting some kids behind on getting the services that they would need. Um, so this is probably a side conversation I should have with Anthony, but it just came up today and I, we're kind of in that topic now. So, um, I'd like to know a little bit more about, I, I guess we decided that the year before last as to, as to why and are, are we speaking with our team about that? How, um, is the directors of SED and, and programs like this feel about that? Because from my understanding, it's like we're setting kids, um, you know, we're not identifying, um, those concerns early like we were before to have those interventions ready to go when they're walking in the building. Um, even to the fact of, um, you know, we're, we're just losing time basically, right? That those students are losing time because we're not having them screened to have, um, their needs met right away. So I don't, I don't know if that now is a good time to discuss that or, uh, not, but I know it plays into this program. So I just was curious as to, as to why we're not doing that.
Yeah, I can, I mean.
I wouldn't, I, I appreciate you raising the question. I wouldn't want to speak on behalf of Superintendent Soto on this. I'm not sure if he's able to speak to it now or if we should come back to it at the end of the presentation.
I, can you hear me, Erin Brunel? Ms. Brunel?
I'm gonna take silence for now to be, we should, because of the.
I'll, I'll follow up with Anthony.
Oh, can you hear, can you hear us now?
Yeah.
Okay, so we were speaking earlier and it sounded like you couldn't hear, but I think we're good now. Go ahead, Anthony.
I, I don't know if it's me. Can you, can you guys hear me? Yeah, so we are screening, the process has changed a little bit. And I think, I think you're right. We, uh, we should have a side conversation and then bring that information back to the, to the school committee. But there is this, uh, perception, I, I don't, the screening is happening, I believe, be, within the first three weeks of the, of the school year. It might not be happening right before the, or like before school starts. But, um, I'll have Mary Ann and, uh, you could reach out to, uh, Sam will set up a meeting so that me, you and, and Mary Ann could discuss it so that we could just provide clarity on, on what the change was, why it was made. And then bring it back to the committee.
That would be great. And then, of course, to just make sure that we're following up on if that was the right change and, you know, where to go from there. So I, I'll follow up with you. Thank you.
Um, another very important rezoning guideline is ensure efficient use of space and stable enrollment. So that means not only enough spaces for, for homeroom classrooms, but also family meetings, counseling, therapies, um, and dedicated space for enrichment. And ideally also stabilizing the number of classes per grade level from year to year rather than having it fluctuate based on, um, student-based budgeting. Next slide, please. And then very important is ensure safe walking routes that speaks for itself. Um, having neighborhood schools, um, it was especially important for, more so for elementary school. They like, a lot of people like the idea of elementary school students being able to walk, um, to their neighborhood school. Minimizing impact on families, um, and this was just mostly about the number of students that would be changing schools next year. And then minimizing transportation costs. Our, we have preliminary analysis on this from APGEO, but we're putting it to, now towards our, in our VersaTran system so we can bring more information back in October for, um, with the information in our own routing system. Next slide. So, um, here are the, here's the summary of the evaluations. And you can see in that first column, that's labeled HPS today. So we evaluated what HPS looks like, um, today under our current situation. And then we show the ratings for, under Dunnehugh, Kelly and Sullivan as middle schools. And the most important takeaway here is for the things that. And the most important takeaway here is for the things that the rezoning committee deemed most important. There's a lot of green and a little bit of yellow for all the new scenarios. Whereas with HPS today, there's a lot of red, so less good, lower points there. Overall, you see a score at the bottom and HPS today is a two point four. Kelly is a three point five. Dunahue Middle is a three point six and Sullivan Middle is a three point seven. These are pretty similar scores. And so I'll go to the next slide. The major takeaway is that we've designed scenarios that are better than the current state and relatively comparable. You know, a difference between a point one isn't enough on this analytical process, isn't enough to make a decision over another. There, that's why this feedback is so important because a lot of this is coming down to people's opinions about where they think a second middle school should be located. I really believe there's not a wrong answer for Holyoke and each scenario could work well for Holyoke. So we're in a good situation that all three are better options than what we have today. That does make our choices harder, which is why it's so important to have feedback. Any questions or should I go on? Okay, let's next slide. So this, I'll go through these a little bit more quickly. I'm just looking at the time. This shows that HPS today and 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 outlines some challenges with the current model, especially the co-locations of the schools and our graduating fifth grade students from Ian White, not having a middle school to go to for dual language. And also the fact that we need to rent space for dual language Metcalf program. Next slide. This gives a more detailed evaluation of what is the areas where Holyoke didn't score, where we scored less than four on our model today. I'll just highlight some of the most significant ones, like the first one is design schools that put student needs first and prioritizes money spent on instruction. Many elementary schools having just two homerooms per grade limits collaboration and resources at every grade level. We operate, we are operating more buildings and schools than necessary and have a lot of co-location. That's why it's getting pretty much like it doesn't meet the criteria. Another, a lot of the other lower points were in that green section, there's quite, there's quite a big gap. This, to explain this balanced student demographics across schools, I took the elementary, I took the school with the highest percent of economically disadvantaged and lowest percent with economically disadvantaged and just subtracted that. And that difference is twenty-three points. For Ls between highest and lowest is twenty-four points and students with disabilities, twenty-seven points. And the middle, at the middle school, the differences are seven points. So that is the widest out of all the four things that we're looking at. So all our scenarios improve on on in terms of having more equal schools. Another thing like program continuity, you know that we don't have a consistent grade level or feeder pattern. And we, and with enrollment, we have a really big distribution of how well we're using capacity. Some schools are overcapacity like Metcalf where we have to rent space. Other schools have a lot more extra classes or might just have like a hundred sixty kids. The best piece about this is that it gets a perfect score for having safe walking routes and minimizing the impact on families. Obviously, no change would be the least amount of disruption for our families. Next slide. And this just shows the map for folks' reference of what it looks like today with the zones. Next slide. Now we go into this part where I have three slides per each scenario, and I'll spend more time on this first Dunahue middle scenario. And these are just presented alphabetically, Dunahue, Kelly, Sullivan. It's not in any recommended order besides alphabetical. And this details the feeder pattern and where dual language programs will be. And I'm really, if you look over at the left-hand side of the slide, it shows what it would look like from fall twenty twenty-three to spring twenty twenty-six. And then the right-hand side shows fall twenty twenty-six and beyond. And that's because while we're building a new PEC, kids would need to be at Metcalf or STEM. So when I'm talking, I'm going to focus more on twenty twenty-six. For brevity's sake. But in here, you see Lawrence, Morgan and Sullivan would feed into Dunahue. And Ian White and Kelly with the dual language programs plus McMahon would feed into PEC. Next slide. And actually, can we go one more slide over, one more slide and then backtrack? And so then this is what the maps look like. And you see that an elementary zone map right next to a middle zone map. So you see like that that represents the feeder patterns I just just explained. So it's like, that's how you see like Sullivan Lawrence and Morgan areas are coming together to be served at Dunahue Middle School, for example. We can go back a slide now. And this presents the evaluation. That what I wanted to, a couple of things I wanted to explain is where it didn't get a four under ensure equitable access to special programs. We might not have room for a pre-K at Ian White or McMahon. Or in order to do that, we'd have to do something like art on a cart or music on a stage. So taking away a dedicated space for enrichment. Under balanced student demographics, this was the middle of the this was the middle rating of the three scenarios. The elementary differences were twenty points for economically disadvantaged, fourteen for L, sixteen for students with disabilities. The middle school differences were four, three and seven. This does have the largest amount of middle school differences of of all three scenarios. And and remember, we said balancing student demographics was especially important in middle school. This does not have the feeder, elementary to middle school feeder pattern only for the TIP program. It does in all the other criteria. For neighborhood schools, this one has the lowest amount of middle school walkers. And there are some areas by Lawrence that kids are zoned for McMahon to balance enrollment and demographics that a family might be like, why don't I get to go to this school? That's just a couple blocks away. The total percent of students impacted, and this is a low rating across all of them, is sixty-seven percent of of students would be going to a different school next year. So that's not just because of switching to elementaries and middle schools. It's also about rejoining those boundary lines to achieve these guidelines. And it it may require more busing costs a little bit more, but we're still evaluating that. So the overall rating is a three point six. We can go forward two slides. Here's the Kelly middle scenario. I'm going to focus on the right. Oh, please, Erin, go ahead.
Sorry, it's more of just a comment than a question, like the concern about spending money on buses. I mean, that's one of the whole reasons we went to K to eight. So, you know, like you said, and like in the presentation says, and like the the people focusing on the best decision. It it's about what's best for the student and not a, to me, like busing costs. I mean, that's just, that's a side note because busing was one of the main reasons we went to this K to eight model all these years ago. And then to the comment about, you know, well, you know, students that live close to Lawrence might have to come up to Dunahue. That's also a huge benefit of having the middle school model programming that we're looking to have and getting away from the so strict neighborhood school because some kids never get out of their own neighborhood. And there is a benefit to getting around the city, to seeing the city, to being in school with not just the kid down the street, but the kid that you wouldn't have met otherwise. And you know, mixing that socioeconomic status and all of that. So in my personal opinion, you know, the more mixed up it is, the better. And busing costs is something that the city is just going to have to accept and say, we're doing what's best for our students and busing costs is just something that's going to have to go along with it. That's just my perspective when you, I hear those points because you know, those are the two, two of the things that to our detriment is why we went to K to eight to begin with. So sorry, but.
Appreciate those points and they're really well taken and why input so important. Obviously, we do want to be good fiscal stewards with the city too. So we're we're going to do our best to minimize transportation costs, but yep, in certain, these might cost more in some ways. And we will bring back more information in October so people can make a more informed decision. Any other questions about the Dunahue middle scenario or comments from the audience? Okay, okay, great. So when Kelly, in the scenario where Kelly's a middle school focusing on the right-hand side, Ian White would go to Kelly and Dunahue would go to PEC. But Morgan, Lawrence, Sullivan and McMahon would all go to Kelly or PEC. And that's because of that need to to have a more equal distribution of students across the two middle schools. So next slide. Actually, let's go one forward so people can see the map right away too. What's, what's really important in this map is I think when, or it's an obvious, I can completely empathize with why someone would think this. But when people hear Kelly as a middle school, they think that all the students are going to be coming from, they might think that all the students are coming from the flats in South Holyoke because naturally you know, if you can, you want kids to attend a school close to them. When we did that, that's when the demographics were really unequal. So we we instead split the middle school kind of on this diagonal. So I just wanted folks to to know that. And to Erin's point, some people were like worried that students like in the, in South Holyoke and in the flats might only have opportunities to go to school in their neighborhood and they might want to go to school outside of their neighborhood. I also, and I should have mentioned this before, if you look up here at that, you see Ian White at the, in the blue section checkered. When Ian White or Kelly is an all dual language school, we still wanted to give families in really close to that school preference for attending it. And otherwise, but they don't have to attend the dual language program. So otherwise, so if you're in those two zones right by Ian White, you could attend Ian White for dual language. Or if you didn't want to be in dual language, that's when you would go to Sullivan. So that's how it's explained in the other two maps too. Oh, a question, two questions?
I'm sorry, I wasn't called. Whoever else was speaking, go first.
Let's go back to the map, sorry, because it's probably a map question.
It's not really, it's not a map. It's the middle school scenario with Kelly being the middle school. How are things going to be, how are students going to be chosen as to either go to Kelly or PEC? Since there's no clear cut direction, it seems like it's somehow going to be decided.
Oh, great question, Ellie. And I'm sorry for not explaining that clearly. Do you see like? Okay, let, I wish you could see, you like, I wish you could see my arrow. But it's, if you live in, if in the purple area, if you live in any of those neighborhoods, you're zoned for Kelly. So some of the purple area, for example, kids are coming from Sullivan, but some Sullivan kids also will go to PEC. So it's based on your address.
So it's still zoned?
Yep. It's, yeah, it's still zoned. It's just like it's, it's just not that all kids from one elementary school go to one middle school. And like I said, these maps are draft, like in the November timeframe, we could refine these, but after, like each scenario, like I said, we looked at like three to six options or four to six options. And this was the one that the working group thought was best. And as a reminder, the working group is city employees, district employees and school employees.
So Brunel.
Thanks. So I don't know which middle school option I support yet, but I definitely support the dual language being its own identity, right? And whether or not that ends up being Lawrence or sorry, Kelly or Ian White. The same concern is going to come up. So you said that kids in that zone would get to choose Ian White if it's the dual language. But the dual language has to have equal opportunity throughout the city, no? So we can't just default to too many kids within that that zone, whether, like I said, whether it's Kelly or Ian White, right? We can't have it so that a kid that lives, you know, nowhere near that zone is less likely to get in on that lottery system. Because somebody who lives next to it wants to go to the dual language program. So I I just see that as something, obviously, we'll continue to discuss. I just wanted to put forth my note on that thought while it came up.
Thank you, Erin. Yeah, we definitely talked about that a lot. And I do, I do just want to reassure people that there still would be a lot of space available for citywide, even though there was that neighborhood's preference if you lived right next to Ian White or Kelly. But yeah, that's a trade-off. So people, if you didn't like that preference, you could also note it in our survey or comments, just not you, just you, Erin, but someone else could reach out to us and let us know that. Now, if we could go back a slide. So although this was the lowest rated of the scenarios, it it still is rated green. So it's a very good option for Holyoke. The ensure equitable access to special programs, perhaps no room for pre-K at Ian White or McMahon. Even if we did make room, it would probably just be one classroom. And that's because the McMahon building is very small. It's only twenty-one homerooms where all the other schools are twenty-six plus homerooms, except for Metcalf, which is super small. And then also if Ian White's in all dual language school, the to have four homerooms per grade makes it a little tighter. The balanced student demographics across schools. This had the largest elementary school difference in race, race and economically disadvantaged of all three scenarios. But the middle school, the middle school differences were less. This got the lowest rating for ensure program continuity because of what we've been talking about where at four of the elementary schools, you would go to two different middle schools. And then it didn't receive a perfect rating for ensure safe walking routes because some people have voiced that if if there's the most number of walkers from Kelly, a middle, a middle school, then that could make potentially some arguments could happen in the community on the way home from school. Once again, some students by Lawrence, close to Lawrence would go to a different school. And the total percent of students impacted to sixty-seven percent, just like the Dunahue middle scenario. And then our early analysis says that perhaps two percent, actually fewer students would be eligible for busing than than currently are. And sorry, I forgot the E on that. Any questions on the Kelly middle scenario?
No questions.
Okay. Okay, we'll go to the Sullivan one. So skip ahead two slides, please. Okay, in this one, looking at the right, Dunahue, McMahon and Morgan.
Erin, I got a question, sorry.
Perfect.
Mr. Callamore.
Yeah, on the Kelly school, for example, but it's all schools. Going to their neighborhood school to talk to the principal, talk to a teacher or something like that. What happens now? Parents don't have that access? Get to, up to Dunahue or up to?
Yeah, I I'd like, so that's a great point. It came up at several meetings. What most people have expressed is that having, having access to your school in your neighborhood close by is more important in the elementary grades than it is at the middle schools. That's what we've heard with families. But we also understand that, you know, in a scenario where Kelly becomes a middle school, that moves Kelly, like those elementary families to another school, which, you know, could be a barrier in transportation for 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 the younger students. So that's, that's just something that we need to problem solve. We have vans, for example. Right now, they're, they're parked on the Dean campus. There's four of them. But when we move to this middle school model, maybe we have a van at both of the middle schools so that families having trouble accessing it, maybe our family engagement coordinator or a staff member at the building could provide easy access to families. So we we haven't fully solved that. But thank you for bringing it up because it has come, come up at several meetings. And we just need to think about that as we move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Callamore. In the Sullivan middle scenario, Dunahue, McMahon and Morgan go to Sullivan. Whereas Lawrence, Ian White and Kelly with the dual language schools goes, go to PEC. Let's skip ahead two slides. So you can see how the maps changed a little bit. And to this, to this point, the Kelly dotted line situation here to this point, the Kelly dotted line situation here means that there's preference for students in those two zones to get dual language at Kelly. Um, and if they choose not to have dual language, then they would be going to Morgan. Next slide. Oh, actually, no, it's probably, yeah, it's that one, perfect. Um, this, when Sullivan's a middle school, gets the highest ratings overall. Um, let me explain the ones that don't get full points. Um, balancing student demographics across the school, that, this is the relatively the highest. Um, so it mostly meets the criteria, sorry. Um, at elementary school, the difference in economically disadvantaged is 18 points, 19 points for Ls, 17 points for students with disabilities. And for middle school, it's no difference for economically disadvantaged, six points for Ls and three points for students with disabilities. This, out of the three scenarios, this is the largest difference in, in school, the spread for students with, um, who are English learners. But the really good news is that it's the stu- the higher rates of students who are English learners are actually at the dual language school, which is a great program to serve their needs, so it's kind of the best. It's like close enough, but in, when in doubt, it's, it's more kids, um, at the dual language program, so that's a good thing overall. For neighborhood schools, it has the second highest amount of middle school walkers, there are some middle school walkers who are close to Peck, but end up, wait, same percent of middle school walkers to Peck as Dunnehew middle scenario. So it's just, it's kind of comparable. Um, of the three scenarios, it has slightly the least amount of impact, but it's still 62% of students impacted that would need to move schools. And then the early analysis on busing is potentially 6% more students would be eligible for busing, but we need to look into that. Um, next slide. Yeah, so this is the summary again, same chart as before, I'd love to open up and take questions um, from anybody on the Sullivan one or anything overall.
Anybody have any questions? Student reps? Ellie?
There's just a lot to take in.
Absolutely.
You know, see, you know, seeing maps, um, you know, I would be expecting we'll be getting, uh, phone calls and emails um, from our, you know, people within our wards or throughout the city, um, you know, letting us know what they favor and what they may not be so positive about. Uh, but there was a lot of effort and a lot of thought that went into, you know, the three choices that we have in front of us. And on a positive note, it, you know, like you said, there's really no going wrong when we move to that middle school model. Some families will not be happy, but no matter what we do, that's going to be the case. And moving to the middle schools is the right direction for our city to take.
Yeah, thank you for saying that, and I just wanted to, like, I wanted to acknowledge Erin, Erin really did a good job on, okay, like, what, what could we do for families and for the average person in a short 10-minute presentation or 20-minute presentation? And then what could we do for those that, that may want to dive deeper, right? So, um, we've put a ton of resources on our website. Um, we have a short 20-minute video that goes through at a high level for someone that may, you know, may not necessarily care as mu- not, not say care, but might not want all the details. We have a short 20-minute video online that they can go through, where Erin's covering all these points that we saw today. And then we have a longer, uh, four, 60-minute video, I believe, or maybe even longer than that, where if there's any parts of it that you're like, you know what, I want to lo- know a little bit more, I want to know a little more about that. Um, you know, you can fast forward to that section of the video and dive really deep into it. So we're re- we recognize that this is a lot of information and we're doing the best to summarize it as best as possible, but also have, for those that are interested, a ton of resources that, like, those that are interested and really wanting to dive deep, there's opportunity to do that on our, on our website.
Brunel.
Yeah, thanks, um, just as a note, it would have been, I would have appreciated having this before the first public meeting. Um, I've already been getting some, um, mostly Facebook messages, but messages from, uh, constituents with questions, and I felt like they had the information before I had it. Um, so that would have been helpful, just moving forward, it, you know, it's always good for us um, to get stuff ahead of time if possible, um. I would just like to, like, again, appreciate all the hard work that went into it and kind of second Ellie's point, which is what I said to one of the parents that reached out to me, and I was like, you know, change is hard and it's going to affect majority of students across the district in some way, shape or form, and a, a significant amount of staff and you know, what I said to her is kind of the same thing that Ellie noted, it's just like, we are committed to doing what, as a community, we feel is the, going to be the most beneficial to the Holyoke Public School community as a whole. So it may not be in your mind as a parent, what's most ideal for your student, and why does my student have to be the one to move, and why does my kid? Um, and so I just encourage those parents, like Anthony said, to read the, the presentation, to watch the videos, to dive into the website. But most importantly, come to the presentations where you can have the one-on-one dialogue by having questions. Um, submit public comment to our meetings here. Um, send questions in advance of meetings, you know, there's so many opportunities for parents to have a voice throughout this process. And I just want parents to, parents, guardians, caregivers to know and understand that we care, and we care to hear what your opinion is, um, and we, you know, will absorb your opinion. But it, you know, you have to also understand that we can't make every parent, every caregiver, every guardian um, concerns, you know, we can't make everyone happy throughout this process. But if you stick with the plan overall and look at the end goal, you know, the end game goals, not results yet, but the goals, and, um, what we're trying to do as a city to improve the outcome of every student, then hopefully you'll, you, you and us as parents will be able to understand, um, you know, that our, our children luckily are very good at adapting and surviving change, and regardless of what we do, um, just know that your voice will be heard and you have lots of opportunities to voice those concerns, um, as we go forward through this process.
John.
Real quick, um, Dr. Soto, this might be a good time for you to maybe, um, spread the word on our ongoing uh, meetings regarding the zoning for the public to attend.
Gustavo. Um, I just want to invite everybody to, um, follow the Holyoke Public School Facebook page. Um, if you're ever wondering about what events are happening, what time and place, please just look at events. Um, more than likely, somebody had already posted it, and you can get information from there and follow us and join us in our lovely meetings and like Erin said, um, we would love to hear your opinion, we need your feedback, and this is for you and your kids and your city, so please be a part of it.
Thank you. Linville.
Erin, do you want to quickly plug, um, the next event at Holyoke High School, I believe it's September 29th, but?
I would love to, and, I mean, this feedback is terrific and just appreciate how much you are all amplifying the message, it's so important. So we have, so on Wednesday morning at 9:00 AM, we have a virtual session, go to our website to sign up for that. That's Wednesday, um, September 21st. Then our in-person session, our next one is at, on Thursday, September 29th at 5:30 at Holyoke High School, with free buses from Dunnehew and Sullivan around 5 o'clock to bring you there, food, childcare by the YMCA and, um, and Learn in Motion for Fun Activities for Kids and Interpretation. At the Kelly meeting last week, we had 50 adults and 60 families with rave reviews, um, from the kids. And then we also have, um, at the time when the district parent advisory council usually meets on Thursday, October 11th, um, there's a virtual meeting at 5:30, which you do need to register to, for, to get the Zoom link. Um, also based on the feedback, um, from the rezoning working group or task force that met last Monday, including, um, Gustavo, shop, talked about, like, as people are talking about which school should be the middle school, school, um, people would like perhaps the visual of what it looks like, so our communications team is putting together like a photo diary, for lack of a better word, photo video, um, that should be available on our website by next Monday at the latest, and then we're also hosting tours at 4 o'clock at, um, at the schools, at each of those three schools next week, um, to show up in the lobby. The exact dates, um, will be in the Holyoke update, which is our family newsletter, and if you don't get that Holyoke update, but you want it, um, email us at communications@hps.holyoke.ma.us. And then there's also a survey, um, open for all stakeholders through October, um, 13th, and we're going to really, um, start pushing that next week, so if you haven't gotten it yet, don't worry, you're going to be reminded to take it a lot. So thank you for everyone who has participated, and we can't wait to see more people, um, involved, too.
Thank you so much, Erin.
Oh, I also had to say, the fa- our face, our family and community engagement team has been absolutely terrific, also at open houses, um, back-to-school events, sharing information, so I wanted to just say thank you to them, to extending our outreach beyond, um, these meetings, too, because we know that not everyone is able to come to a one-hour meeting.
I would say they're the best thing in the district, but, uh, I'm biasedly speaking right now, so.
Well, you should be. They're, I'm biased, too, they were some of my favorite people.
There you go. Anything else on the, uh, rezoning?
That concludes, uh, the superintendent's report.
Thank you so much for that very long and detailed and informative report, Anthony, I see there was a lot of thought um, and hard work that's gone into it, and, uh, I'm just so very thankful on the level of work and transparency you do with the public, as well as this school committee when you're trying to navigate these things. Um, we have, uh, new business, uh, this is on the, I can't recall what we had at, discussed at our last meeting.
So at the last meeting, the, the superintendent slash receivers evaluation that Commissioner Riley uh, sent to the school committee was included in the packet, and I think that this committee agreed that they have it, let's take a month to look at it, and, and if we have any questions, we'll bring them to the next school committee meeting, so that's why it's on the agenda, if anybody has any questions.
Thank you, Anthony. Did anybody have an opportunity to review the evaluation and want to offer some feedback? Uh, Mr. Callimore?
Yes, I reviewed that very carefully, and I want to thank, uh, Dr. Soto for an excellent report from the state, because I've been going through these for many, many years about evaluation of our superintendent, and this is one of the best evaluations I've seen in a long, long time, and I commend you, Doctor, for excellent report from the state, because this is very important, and you're coming along, working with us to make our school system a better school. We really appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you. Ellie.
Oh, no, I think.
Oh, sorry.
He was next.
Uh, Ms. Willoughby, John.
Thank you, yeah, um. When we had the vacancy, um, uh, because of the last, uh, super, uh, um, lieutenant that left, and when we, um, sat down with, uh, Commissioner Riley and his staff, he kind of gave me an open-ended question, is anyone in the district that you would recommend for superintendent? Anybody out there? And I said, real quick, Mr. Soto. Okay, so I'm, I'm proud that you're sitting here with us.
Thank you, John. Ms. Wilson?
It's nice having someone from Holyoke who knows Holyoke, who, you know, leading us, um, through this time. I think, um, I'm going to be honest, you not being an educator kind of, you know, I perked up a little more, um, because of that, but as, uh, most smart individuals do, you surround yourself with people and you learn, and you've done a wonderful job doing that.
Ms. Brunel.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we, um, accept or receive or adopt or whatever we need to do to I don't know the right word, I, we want to, like, we received it, we, um, you know, we tried to put this motion in last week, but we wanted more time to actually review the report. So I, I don't know why I can't think of the right word, but.
Well, we can do is, uh, motion to comply.
And approve the, the review from the state.
Yes.
So Erin has made a motion to formally receive.
Second.
Evaluation seconded by Mrs. Wilson. I think we're going to do, need to do a roll call, but before we do that, any other discussion? So do you want to add?
I, I mean, I just wanted to say thank you, I'm humbled, um, a lot of kind words, um, and that, that, that were expressed, and I, I just really appreciate it, I, I wouldn't want to do this anywhere else, and that's what I've been saying from the beginning, I don't, I don't know that I would be a superintendent anywhere else, like, this is where my heart is, and if, and I'll be here as, as, as long as I can take it, and as long as you guys will have me.
Thank you, Mr. Soto. Any other discussion? Sam, can we do a roll call?
Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
The Fave. Ms. Brunel?
Yes.
Mr. Romero?
Yes.
Ms. Tensley Williams, Ms. Rivera Cologne.
Yes.
Ms. Feliciano? Ms. Willoughby?
Yes.
Mr. Callimore?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
So by your vote, we've formally received the superintendent evaluation, accepted, and thank you, Anthony, so much for everything you do. Uh, new MCAS requirements, that, was there someone that put in this order or wanted to take a lead?
Josh, if I may, Mildred asked me to, um, table this to the next meeting so that she can be a part of the discussion.
Is that a motion?
I make the motion to table this until the next meeting.
Motion to table, Ellie. Second it, Mr. Callimore, any other further discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. The Fave. Ms. Brunel?
Yes.
Mr. Romero?
Yes.
Ms. Tensley Williams? Ms. Rivera Cologne?
Yes.
Ms. Feliciano? Mr. Willoughby?
Yes.
Mr. Callimore?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
All right, so by your vote, the, it's, it's been tabled. Uh, approval of meeting minutes from May 26, 2022, joint school committee, city council meeting minutes.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes, Ms. Brunel.
Um, these minutes have not yet been presented to my subcommittee, so this, uh, needs to be presented to the subcommittee for approval first, and then I'm happy to refer them back to the full committee for approval. So this, um, I don't know if tabling is the right word, but it needs to be, um,
referred back to the, referred back to the subcommittee.
Committee, yeah.
So I make a motion to refer back to the subcommittee.
Motion to refer back to the subcommittee. Second it by Ms. Willoughby. Uh, the, sorry, the joint school committee and the city council subcommittee.
Correct, thank you.
Uh, Sam, roll call?
Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. The Fave. Ms. Brunel?
Yes.
Mr. Romero?
Yes.
Ms. Tensley Williams? Ms. Rivera Cologne?
Yes.
Ms. Feliciano? Mr. Willoughby?
Yes.
Um, Mr. Callimore?
Yes.
And Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
All right, so by your vote, we've, what did we do?
We have a referred.
We referred back to subcommittee.
Committee, yes.
To, thank you. Uh, ongoing business, up, any updates from any of the subcommittees?
So on behalf of the policy subcommittee, um, I am looking to schedule a meeting. Um, I am going to be, we're going to be probably working with, um, our local representative, um, on the policies. Um, but I, so, um, I'll be looking to do that.
Thank you, Ellie, any questions for? Uh, Mr. Callimore?
So that's going to be part of our discussion as a subcommittee.
So, uh, all right, no other updates from any subcommittees?
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Brunel, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, so the joint committee of the school committee and city council was going to possibly meet this Thursday, but then the school building committee made a meeting, but then canceled. Um, so I'm looking to have a meeting for that committee on September 29th, which would be the following Thursday. Um, so stay tuned, that should be posted soon, um, and then the agenda to follow. Um, so stay tuned. That should be posted soon. Um, and then the agenda to follow.
Thank you, Ms. Brunel. Any other reports from uh any of the other subcommittees? Announcements? Announcements? Mr. Willian?
Yeah, um. This might be uh for maybe you to uh uh expound on um, that the committee met with uh the state. Uh, last, last Saturday, um, just um for like a um learning session, basically. Um, just what our roles are for uh. Uh, for the committee coming forward. And I know um, uh, you were there too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Willoughby. The update that, the announcement that Mr. Willoughby had just shared, it wasn't with the state, it was with MASC, right? That's not to be, right, okay. So MASC, was it the chair or president?
Association of, yeah, school committee, and I believe it was the chair.
Chair and our former administrative aide.
Liz LaFond.
Liz LaFond was present also and to John's announcement or points there, we we met, it was called charting the course. And uh really it's to, you know, get to, get the board to understand what its role is. When, when, when in local control and and um what your responsibilities are and and the responsibilities between the board and the managers and. Um, uh, how to govern accordingly based on whatever rules and policies and charters. Um, that are present. So it was a really good and informative course. We have another one coming up and. Um, the majority, you know, our members have been, were present and asked a lot of great questions and. Um, you know, I feel really good on on uh the direction that um. Members are going, taking in uh and participating in these trainings and. And really understanding, um, you know, what our roles are as a, as members on a school body. So uh, yeah, thank you, John, for bringing that up. Uh, Mr. Callamore?
Yes, and I'd like to thank Glenn Kuchar.
Glenn Kuchar, yes.
Cooperating with us from MASC office.
Thank you. I have some announcements, but did anybody else have any other announcements to offer? Um, couple of things. Uh, one, I thank you to members that were able to participate at the Puerto Rican parade that took place. On Sunday, we were the only municipal contingency in that parade. Um, uh, so Hoyoke was definitely in the house with school committee members, city council members, our superintendent. The band was present, uh, so was our cheerleaders, um, and two members of our uh police department. Badge number one and one of four of our captains. Um, it was great, um, uh, great event. Uh, was very happy to have. Members there. I, you know, thank the bu- the bandleader, was it Kay- Casey or Cassie? And who's the cheerleader? The the cheerleader uh manager?
The coach, I don't know.
The coach? Well. They get our name. Um, but thank you to 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 them for um, for doing what they do with our students and and for having the students participate in the parade. It was great. Uh, just to let folks know that we've engaged a CERT team and the school district is part of that team. Um, that's the Community Emergency Response Team that. Uh, meets regularly with our emergency management coordinator and getting trained in how to respond when emergencies take place in our community. Uh, it's no different than how our community already responds, except it's a little bit more strategic and coordinated and with strong communication. Uh, you know, I've noticed since I've been involved even before becoming mayor. Who comes to the table every time, whether if it's in a fire um situation or or um weather events, Hurricane Maria, for example, and now we got Fiona. Um, so what we did was uh, uh, reached out to those members and since I've been elected, they've been. Um, connecting with Jeff Trask, our emergency management coordinator, also one of three of our fire commissioners. Getting trained and um, you know, how we can better um maximize on our available resources and. Who's going to be on the ground, um, leaders when it comes to XYZ. Uh, we've engaged that team uh to respond to two things. One, whatever's going on um with the situation over at the uh Martha's Vineyard. Um, uh, you know, if a bus was to show up in Hoyoke. First thing in the morning, how would we respond? So we've been having those discussions. And uh, uh, also most recently Hurricane Fiona and how we respond to that. And our first and and immediate answer was uh, welcome to Hoyoke. Um, would be our first and initial response, but and then um, you know, obviously, you know. On the ground coordination with organizations, be it housing and other services to make sure that people are are navigating, you know, the challenges. Um, but you do, we do have the CERT team. That did, that's beginning phase one, which is just sending care packages um. That one of our business owners has been coordinating uh, the Hoyoke Chamber of Commerce, destination for monetary donations. Um, uh, so you can trust uh your resources going there, your your funds going there. Um, and phase two of this whole thing, if there is going to be a phase two, is the migration that we can possibly experience. Of folks coming from the island uh and making their way here. I know during Hurricane Maria, how many students did we? Have to uh accept into the school district during that time? We got over two hundred and fifty. Over two hundred and fifty kids. So on the ground discussions with our leadership on that front to be sure that we're learning. From uh the past and and make and improving where we can be better and getting ready for that when it gets here. And uh. Last and final update I had, and I don't even know if I should put this in an update, but. Football field, I think. So. So soon, um, I don't have too many details, but just generally speaking. Um, we should be getting, we should start seeing improvements uh to our football field as well as our our track and fields. Coming November, um. The 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 legal situation that's been going on came to some re- resolution for the field. And we're trying to coordinate this project in conjunction with also updating the track and field. Uh, so that we can do this project together and coming. You know, in the s- in the spring, there'll be a a a field we can all be proud of. Go ahead, Anthony. Did you, did you want to say something? No, I just wanted to, like, we're gonna get a new, brand new turf, brand new field, brand new track, so. Uh, we'll be able to benefit from that starting uh um as soon as the summer. I think it's going to be done in in the spring, right? It should be done by the spring. Done by the spring, so. We're trying our best to, because the project might start during and hopefully to the far end of football season. Uh, um, we are working with the the coaches and and. Mitigating, making sure that, you know, as far as scheduling is concerned, away versus home games, that. There is an impact um to the 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 game schedules of the season. Um, but that's the only real challenge, but on the flip side, you know, it looks like soon we'll be getting a new field. Um. And that's all I have for updates.
So who do I need to speak to to um, talk about getting lacrosse lines put on that field? Since that's an up and coming sport in our area.
To me, I'll make it happen.
Then I'm going to talk to you about that.
We'll make it happen. Uh, so if there isn't. It's already in the minutes. Uh, if there is any other updates or announcements from anybody, um, make a motion to officially adjourn.
Second.
So moved.
Do I have to do roll call on that too, or?
Yes.
We do, yeah, because I'm on Zoom.
Motion uh by Brunel and seconded it by Wilson, no further discussion? No, 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 roll call.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. The Fave. Ms. Brunel? Mr. Romero?
Yes.
Um, Ms. Tensley Williams? Ms. Rivera Cologne?
Yes.
Ms. Feliciano? Mr. Willoughby?
Yes.
Mr. Callamore?
Yes.
And Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Officially adjourned.